Let's officially call the meeting to order. And second item on the agenda is our public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
All right. Third item is public hearing. Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. Good morning. This is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2223 budget as required by the Fiscal Control Act. This is the town spending plan, the proposed spending plan for the fiscal year beginning one July and ending 30 June 2023. I have three things to share with the public. One is a brief schedule that the board has followed in developing the proposed budget, go through a buy-funded explanation, and also a buy-funded explanation by sharing some of the highlights from the proposed budget. The schedule that the board has followed began at the end of March. The department heads had their inputs to me the beginning of April. The 21st of April, the board held a workshop. We met with the Canal Dredging Working Group on the 22nd of April, followed by another budget workshop on the 20th of May. Subsequently, the budget message was published on Memorial Day weekend, and that brings us to today's public hearing. As a reminder, the proposed schedule has consideration for the ordinance at the regular board meeting on the 21st, with the required adoption being one July. A buy-fund overview, our total budget is a little over $96 million. The general fund houses $4.3 million. It's augmented by the American Recovery Plan at $211,000. The water sewer budget is proposed at $7.4 million. The B-Park Fund is just shy of $5 million at 4.9. Canal dredging accrues to $3.2 million, with $150,000, give or take, in the Water Capital Reserve Fund estimated, along with the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund at $301,000. The Beach and Inlet Reserve Fund is scaled at $2.2 million, with the big purple gorilla in the room being the FEMA capital project at $73.6 million. Highlights in the general fund, we propose to keep the 20-cent tax rate. That results in an estimated 66% available fund balance. A contribution of 2 cents of adwaren tax goes to the B-Park Fund to subsidize the Central Reach One debt service, funds financial software replacement in administration, and proposes to resurface Point West Tide Ridge and Ranger Streets. It also proposes to fund a replacement vehicle for the police department and also a replacement vehicle in the sanitation department. Funding for a townwide stormwater study is proposed, and that is enabled by the leveraging of the use of the American Recovery Plan money to improve stormwater issues at the 300 block of Ocean Boulevard West. It also provides an employee bonus and merit pay. And although this is, I'm showing this in the general fund, the employee bonus, merit pay, and also the dollar across the board per hour raise, even though I've got it housed in the general fund slides, just recognize that is across all of the funds where personnel are paid from. Over to, onto the water and sewer fund, the water and sewer capital fee will increase to $467 for the increase in the collection system debt. Programs via borrowed funds, the Greensboro Lift Station Upfit, which is the third in the series of three rehabilitations for the sewer system, and also programs capital outlays for valve pits, water meters, and a replacement generator set, in addition to funding a second water tower needs assessment. To the Beach Parks Access Recreation and Tourism Fund, also known as the B-Park Fund, it uses beach, the B-Park Fund via the transfer from the Beach and Inlet Reserve Fund, it uses those funds to pay the larger portion of the Central Reach debt service, satisfies debt services for the pier and block queue properties recently acquired, and also proposes funding year two of the core storm damage study. It funds permitting required, also funds permitting required for future town-sponsored projects, beach projects, along with the requisite engineering assessments. There are some residual strand maintenance activities required of the most recent Central Reach project that we did, i.e., we're going to have to till and we're going to have to rock pick. So the B-Park Fund is also programmed to support those efforts. The proposed budget provides for strand and waterway access enhancement, i.e., beach mats, kayak launch, parking lots, and walkway repairs, in addition to proposing funds for initial pier repairs, Jordan Boulevard public restrooms, and improvements at 796 OBW. The FEMA Fund, that $73 million capital project fund mentioned earlier, that is the vehicle that we administer the financial transactions associated with the repair cost of hurricanes. It houses the central, the Phase Two, or the second Central Reach Project Special Obligation Bond of $27.7 million. Just as a footnote, we're going into year two of a three-year short-term variable rate debt instrument there. That should be finalized on July the 16th. The fund and the fund will remain open until closed out by FEMA. Canal dredging, the canal dredging fees accrue at the same rates. There is no active project program for the upcoming year, but preparations are being made to have a shovel-ready project should we need it. Funds, it's proposed to fund disposal site policy development and take care of any permitting requirements for future projects. Capital reserve funds, we have three capital reserve funds. The water and sewer capital reserve funds were established by act of the General Assembly, and they are the home for the system development fees that are to be used for water and sewer capital expansion, i.e., we don't have one capital reserve fund, we have two, one for water and one for sewer. The estimated accruals in the water capital reserve fund is $151,000, and in the sewer side, it's $301,000. With the transfer of the $871,000 contribution to the B-Park Fund to pay for a large portion of the Central Reach Project One Special Obligation Bond debt estimate, that the balance remaining in the Beach and Inlet Reserve Fund will be $1.375 million. In conclusion, the budget as presented is balanced in accordance with the Fiscal Control Act and takes us back to, that's all I've got for the public hearing today, and I'll turn it over to the board or whoever would like to comment.
All right. Any questions or comments?
While I was looking through this, David and I did not see anything about the audio improvements for these meetings. Also, at this day and time, with the ability to do both audio and visual, it's something that we could at least have in the budget where we could get some type of pricing on getting that done. It seems to be kind of like, I hate to use the word joke, but people actually laugh at how poorly this is done. And this is 2022. I mean, it's not like it can't be done correctly.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and address that. Y'all are gonna have to describe exactly what you propose to how to conduct your meetings because, as it is now, I'm under the assumption that the board wants to hold its meetings here, and the Facebook solution that we put in was a temporary measure to accommodate COVID, and up until now, the board hasn't expressed a desire to conduct a virtual meeting. And if that's where y'all want to go, then I need to be, I need to have it clarified as to exactly what that is so we can get some assessment of what the board wants, how the board wants to do business, because it has implications for public records, retention of digital files, et cetera, et cetera.
David, I thought about five years ago, there was something that was done that just basically was how we could, from this room, video, do a video of meetings so that we had the audience that doesn't live here capability of watching and listening in time as well as our audience that does come.
That's correct, and the board decided that that was not something that they wanted to pursue.
That's right, but I think this board is now saying maybe we should pursue it based upon...
Then that answer's gonna be $50,000 minimum. It was $40,000 at that particular time.
I didn't, I somehow had in my head it was 60 last time, but whatever. I think that what Rick is just asking is, can we get a, can we get an up-to-date assessment of what it would cost to do that? I would certainly agree with him at this point. Anything we can do to keep more of our homeowners engaged now, rather than relying on sort of assessments done by different individuals, instead of actually listening to the whole meeting, watching the meeting, and eventually reading our minutes, I think it would benefit us. We have a lot more people that seem to be trying to engage with their, and want their opinions heard, but they're only getting part of the story, and it may be that if we go to actually a video of our meetings, we will have more people follow it.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that y'all want to go live, audio, visual, full-blown, integrated with backshop retention of public records.
Yes.
I think two of us have said yes, that's something. There's another three to speak of.
And just so you know, once the emergency of some COVID's over from the governor, you guys can't remotely participate in vote. So if you're looking at it from that aspect, that won't be able to be done with the governor.
Not thinking that long.
So, I mean, that's, we could look into it, but it was in the $50,000 range last time. We do post the audio on YouTube, which nobody has problems listening to. So, I mean, it just depends if you want to spend that much money to go visual.
Yes.
That's what, I mean, the whole board would have to...
I'll say yes. I don't see any reason, we don't have anything, in my opinion, to hide.
I just think it was my, I just, I know money was tight, but we should go in the...
Money's a little tight.
That's what I was...
So, forgetting of a price than a cost.
No, it doesn't, but we got it before, and it wasn't that amount. So, I'm just saying it's not gonna be any cheaper, if anything, it's more expensive. So, that's where I'm at.
Can I add something in? And this is not to the system. I forgot to mention during the presentation, the things that the board had in their last workshop, those were incorporated into the budget, the direction for the raises, the deletion of the body cameras and in-car system. The board had prescribed a desire to retain the improvements for the interrogation room, but when we started looking at that, the cameras, the car cameras, and the backshop portion of the facility, all of those were one system, so we couldn't keep the system in the building upgraded, because it's like buying a car with one tire. It didn't work, so that entire system was deleted from the budget. I forgot to mention that. Okay, so, and I know that that's not related to the board going live, but that was about $100,000 that we pulled there.
Well, wasn't there $15,000 or something left there?
There is, and that's, that's from equipment stuff is what that is. It's just a...
Was the interrogation room?
No, interrogation room's gone. The whole system was integrated and put, you can't pull two pieces out of it and have a standalone. Those things were integrated together, and they won't work without.
You can't do things stepwise?
It's possible. It's not ideal, but it is possible.
And if you did it stepwise, what would it cost in this? Because we were not saying that you shouldn't upgrade the interrogation room since we were, it was sort of described to us that this is a must, that this is something that is required at a state level. And when we hear something like that, we generally say, well, we don't want to stop you from doing that. So, if it was done stepwise, and I understand it's not ideal, what was that cost going to be?
So, just, just to do the room upstairs, because you have to have the back office suite and everything, you're looking somewhere around 20 to 22 thousand, just for the room upstairs for the interrogation.
But then when you went to second step, what you have in there is still used, is still used for the next step of body cams and cameras?
Yeah, that, that doesn't include any of the in-car body cams.
Right, right, but it's part, it would, it would be part of an overall. It's not that it's, you still have the full cost next year. The 22 is a base that then becomes the base for next year.
Correct, correct. If I'm understanding your question, I think so, yes. So, you're saying, yes, you buy this first part because it's got the back office suite and interview rooms. If you add cameras later, they integrate with that system, you know, anything else you do.
It's, it's, my concern is that it's that interoperability thing. He's not gonna be able to use his existing cameras with the new infrastructure. It's two different systems. So, you're gonna buy a piece of it for a year, you're not gonna use it.
Are we or are we not required this year to upgrade the interrogation room?
We're required to have audio and video recordings. We currently meet the standard, but meeting is, we have, we have a system up there that records right now. It's not very reliable, but we do have one there, yes. It's old, it's out of the old, one of our old retired patrol cars, we took a camera out of it and put it in an interview room. It's not reliable.
Okay, I guess what it comes down to is, which is more important to you to, let's just say, meet overall needs? Upgrading the interrogation room, knowing that the existing cameras are, it sounds like are down for this year?
Right.
Or staying with what we've got in interrogation because it keeps the cameras going?
It's, I, I understand the question. It's, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. If we do it, we're running two different systems that we're trying to keep juggling. If we don't, then we're running just the old system that we have. You know, it's, it's completely up to the board. If you wanted to do the two systems, we'll go.
Okay, again, I don't want to put the police force at any unnecessary inconvenience, more important risk.
Right.
So, I'm asking you what your preference is. Do you keep everything, keep the old system because the cameras operate? Or do you go to new interrogation and you incapacitate the cameras? Is it incapacitating the cameras, or you're just operating two separate systems and it's added complexity?
It's, it's two separate systems with added complexity, which is sad, man. I may end up regretting this later on, but I would rather start to move forward on this because if the only way we're gonna get new cameras in the cars and new cameras on the bodies and the interview room, instead of doing one system where we can do it all at one time, it's a step program, then, then I, you know, I'm gonna push for a step program if that's the only way I'm gonna get it in there. We need, we need all of it eventually. I, we need it all at one time, but I understand that that's not coming to fruition, so...
Well, not this year.
No, I, I get it, so...
I agree.
If a step program where we're buying a back office suite and the interview room and running two systems until we can get everything else integrated is what we've gotta do, you know, if the board supports that.
I, I think our last meeting, that's what we said we did support, is leave the interrogation room stuff and, you know, you guys give us the cost, but we support that, and then next year, bring back the cameras and hopefully things are a little bit smoother next year.
Right.
And you're saying it's 20, about 22,000?
Did somewhere 2022 correct, just for that system.
Why would we, Jeremy, why would we have to run two systems? I don't understand. If we get the new one, why do we have to use the old?
Because we're still running 10-8. We have 10-8, and I'm gonna give company names, I'm not degrading anybody. We're running 10-8 is the system that we're running now. It's our in-car camera system, obviously, we don't have body cameras. And to do an interview room, when we retired one of our old patrol cars, we took a 10-8 camera and put it upstairs in the interview room. So, even if we change that to custom signals, who's what we're looking at to do the school integration in one system, I've still got 10-8 cameras in all of patrol cars. So, I've still gotta maintain this, because I can't just cut out all of our in-car cameras because we're replacing one camera upstairs. So, we're gonna be maintaining a 10-8 system and a custom signal system, so it's gonna be two different systems.
To maintain that system, what does it cost? Is there a large cost involved in maintaining?
No, there's, there's not a large maintenance cost on that. I mean, it's, it's, it's the, it's the storage and stuff that we do. Cost-wise, it's, it's...
I think we need to, I agree, that we need to move forward with, with the new system, get that started in place so we can add to the system next year to get you the rest of the equipment that's in there.
I think that the YouTube feed is perfect. I can, it's just as good as somebody sitting in the back row of this room saying that they can't hear, because I'm up here mumbling and we're not talking into our microphones or whatever. The Facebook feed, it depends on what you're listening to it on, but if you want video on Facebook, all you gotta do is turn that around and face this way, and we got it, and it's free. So, I'm not in favor of trying to do all this stuff right now because we are, we're a little bit tied into budget, and we got more things that I think the money could be used for at this point. I'm not opposed to you taking that off of that seal and pointing it at us, but I don't think it's gonna fix the audio problem, because we're gonna be using exactly what we have unless we're upgrading this somehow too. And if we are gonna be able to upgrade the audio, then I don't really think we need the video. There's a bunch of empty seats in here that people can come listen to us, and I understand the out-of-town thing, but the YouTube feed is, in my opinion, fine, so maybe stop the Facebook and listen to it on YouTube, and the, certainly the minutes of the meeting can be read and understood, they're crystal clear, they're on the website, and they're posted, so...
They're not reading them.
That's not my problem, whether people read them or not. If they want to know what the outcome of the meeting was, they're gonna, and that's the only way you can get the information, they're gonna have to read them. People are expecting on Facebook. Facebook was a temporary thing. I'm fine with leaving it because it allows a lot of people to listen in, and that's what people are using, but it's not the best avenue in the world or technical capability to listen to one of these meetings. YouTube's much better, and like I say, the minutes of the meeting are, without a doubt, the best way. But if you want to see you speaking, just turn it around. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. If people want to not stare at the town seal, you guys want to, we just turn what we got around, and that's, that's free, as far as I know. So, if that helps them see who's talking or who's saying what, then that's the easiest solution, in my opinion, was spending zero a month. I'm not for spending 50 grand on, on doing this right now, because we've undertaken so much this year, I'm not, I'm just not for spending anymore, until we can get, get over some of these bumps. I mean, the, the economy with inflation and everything, the way it's going, we, we don't know what we're gonna be faced with in a year from now, and we're just gonna have to take this day by day. I think right now, we need to just, it's just my opinion.
Well, I would at least like to have a, let's just call it a current cost estimate, because the cost estimate from four or five years ago, I'm, I'm sure it's not today's It doesn't, it doesn't cost that much to get an estimate so that we know what we face. And if it waits till next year's budget to, to bring it to fruition, there are enough, and if there continues to be enough pressure for we want you guys to, we really appreciate the town, you know, doing a more, as Rick terms it, 2022 meeting platform, then, then we would have a current cost.
We can get an estimate.
Thank you, David.
Okay.
That's what I was requesting. I don't think we, as Brian said, with the rate of inflation and the way that things are headed right now, we don't really need to undertake anymore. And I also agree, if we can use what we've got now, instead of it, you know, it's actually pointed at, I think, at a beach scene, which is cool, but to have it sat on a table where they could at least see what's, what's going on in possibly, who's talking, and maybe...
I could try, but I don't know if it's gonna get all of you, so I, it's, I don't know that it'll, and nobody is sitting over there to direct it as it's talking. I mean, I don't mind pointing it at you, I just don't know that it'll...
Put it at the center. Put it at the center. The pretty faces.
Heather, also, is there, do you think, then, instead of using these remote mics like we have now, that we could, for a minimal cost, have something like a headset with a microphone that's in front of their mouth where they could actually, whether we're leaving back?
Do y'all want to wear headsets?
I don't, I don't.
No.
I mean, do y'all want to wear headsets? The answer is, is yeah, we can do that. Do y'all want to wear?
No, I don't.
The turtle patrol uses, like, the one that goes on your lapel, but that picks up everything. So, if you want to hear your breathing, your sneezing, your drinking, or if you want to hear all that, yes, we can, but the reason we have these is because if you talk into them, they work absolutely fine. So, you just, I mean, I'm, I'm just as bad. I have mine up all the time because I'm typing. You'll hear me typing while I have the other ones. It just depends what you want. But if you talk into them when it's your turn, I'm sure nobody would have a problem hearing.
I'm sure that just improved what people heard. That's what I'm saying.
I know mine's up, so I'm just as bad.
Use these things that work.
Well, that's why I have mine pointed right at me, because I've been told even as loud as I speak that I can't, there's something, they can't understand what I'm saying.
But it is definitely an option, it's just if you guys want to...
That was just, that was just a question.
Gotcha.
FYI.
I, I think what was agreed was just get us a current cost estimate so that we have it, right?
Yeah.
And the other thing was that the police department should go forward with the interrogation room upgrade.
Any more questions or comments?
We got one more comment. All you department heads that are looking at the merit raises of 5% to all these guys, unless there's a reason they shouldn't get them, it needs to be all town-wide employees, in my opinion, gets that merit raise. And at the town manager's discretion, there is a scale which was done three years ago by a MAPS study that employees can be moved around in. If they're not at that level to hire people and retain the current people that we do have, then that needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis by the town manager. But the merit... But the merit raise, like I said, as long as every employee's showing up for work and doing what they're supposed to do and that type of thing, I would hope that they would all get that, without hesitation or question whatsoever.
David, I noticed also in the budget that there was a note about the bonus in September.
Yeah, and that's, the budget includes exactly what y'all directed, it's the dollar an hour for all employees.
Right.
5% pool, and then the $750 bonus in September for everybody's...
No, it was January for anybody working.
It was on September.
September.
Yeah, right, that's correct. We did exactly like you indicated.
Just wanted to make sure I had that clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, David.
Any more questions or comments?
Just the one, David, the capital...
Yeah, I had an error in the capital improvement plan, the spreadsheet was, we included in the capital plan, it's an extra vehicle in inspections, but it's not in the budget, it was a, it was a drag over from last year, but I think what, it was really a subliminal error because of the amount of revenue that inspections is pulling in, that, you know, the new rules is, is that whatever you bring in inspections, you gotta spend in inspections is a simple thing, so once we get, y'all may be looking at an instance of where we have to actually spend some money in inspections, and probably that will be an additional vehicle whether, in the upcoming budget. So we'll delete it from this, and we'll be in a better position and make that call when we get further on into New Year.
David, it was my understanding that we're gonna use an existing vehicle that was still usable?
Right, right.
That's okay, but, you know, to upgrade the equipment in it or maintenance, whatever our staff thinks is necessary, that's a good idea, to keep what we got upgraded to help them do their job best of hand.
Any more questions or comments? If not, we're gonna move to number five on the agenda.
I don't know that you asked if the public wanted to speak after he spoke, if we could, since it's the public hearing part of it. I think we kind of skipped into four and didn't...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Well, I thought I asked if anybody signed up.
Well, there was a regular public comments, but then he spoke, so it's technically the public hearing part of it. I didn't need to put it on there twice, I got a little crazy with comments.
Okay. All right.
Sorry.
Anybody in the room want to speak? Anybody in the room want to speak? If so, just come to the microphone and give us your name and address and have at it, as long as the subject is the budget. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sure.
Want to behave this morning? Okay. Anything else? All right, number five, is there emotion? If there's no action on the budget?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all for being here this morning.